Do you feel that your teachers are communicating with you enough? Because there are some students that said that they have been reaching out and they haven't received some responses. And then there are some teachers that respond all the time to them. And so they wanted to get a sense on what was happening out there. And so I think there was a take out your neutral. I'm not sure what that means. And I think there was a high majority of people that were getting responded to. Of course, never like to see this. So if there are, you know, 20 kids that aren't getting responded to, you want to kind of reach out and say, what can we do to help them get, you know, get a response? Any questions? Comments? Um, this next one is that the kids were really confused about grading. You know, I think that might be a reason why some of our kids didn't work hard in the very beginning is because they came out and told us to do things for extra credit. And then all of a sudden, since we were home longer, they told us, you know, that it was going to be pass or fail. And so, you know, I received a ton of emails from students saying, Dr. Crouppie, is it for extra credit or is it pass or fail? Or what is it? Do I have to do my homework? So do you believe that the school's been communicating clearly about how assignments will be graded moving forward? And you can see that there's a group of students right here that said, you know, I strongly disagree and disagree with what was happening. That I, they didn't really communicate to me. And I, I believe those are probably some that didn't read their emails or read them, but didn't read them very clearly or didn't want to believe what was in the emails to be true. That they actually had to do some of this work to graduate, to get credit.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, you know, those first few weeks we were at home and we were saying it was extra credit. I think then transitioning was a little confusing. You know, at my house, it was, you know, I had them doing it all along. It was never, I never considered that extra credit. I considered they need to do whatever was assigned to them. So they, I didn't feel like they really, um, but I do think it was confusing. I do think the students were talking to each other and they were getting some different, felt like they got some different information from, um, and it was confusing for a little bit there. I mean, I think they've settled in, but I can see where they were feeling like the communication wasn't as clear, mainly because of that transition. And this is all right, like that's what we've been doing is constantly changing. And this was, you know, a lot for them too to understand it.
Yeah, and for those of you that are listening or will be hearing this recording, it would not, in the very beginning, we would receive new information almost on a daily basis. And we receive new information constantly as well. Um, I think, you know, and now we'll, we receive new information about what's safe and what's not safe. And, um, you know, just last week I was in a meeting about safety measures as we're talking to the Oakland Health Department. And then, you know, here we are a week, not even a week later, and we're opening up to have 100 people together. And so, um, you know, we're constantly thinking about what is it we're doing? And what's safe and what we shouldn't, shouldn't be doing with students? So it's an ever-moving target. Do you feel it would be effective to be online? The kids want to come to school without a doubt. You know, there's a small group, probably that same group that didn't know about the online grading. But kids want to be back to school with their friends. And parents want them to be back to school too.
Yes, yes, we do. We want them in school.
Any comments about that other than that?
Well, that's a good thing. We want them to come back.
But they want to go. Mine want to go. Mine are upset. They, they want to go. They want their friends. They want their teachers.
A lot of kids mostly miss all the other extracurricular stuff, right? The sports and the...
But if they're going to be at home, they want, um, a mix. You know, they don't necessarily, not all of them, some of them want to be in Google Classroom and some of them want to be face-to-face. Isn't that interesting?
I think that's like split.
Mm-hmm. Look at this. And if I'm at home, I want to do things on my own versus a set schedule. Meaning that we've heard from the high school teachers over and over again that our kids want to sleep in and that we should only have Zooms after 12 o'clock. And you hear me over and over again saying, well, it's school time. So we should keep them on a schedule so they get used to it. And they struggle to get a majority of their kids to get up before 12 o'clock to attend Zooms.
I would, I would say that that's the same for the junior high level.
As I say, even our precares, like a lot of our parents, some of them were nurses and stuff like that. So working that third shift and stuff like that, they weren't able to come on Zoom calls until later in the afternoon. Most of mine were, blah, blah, on record as well.
And here's a question. Do you feel prepared to move to the next grade for the 2021 school year? So 50% of our kids say yes, and the other 50 say somewhat a no. And we know that we have some assessment to make determinations about how to move them forward.
So on this one, you have a breakdown of the grade levels that are saying 10.9%.
Yes, we do.
So that would be helpful there.
And I can even say who the kids are, but I would not share that with anything. So anybody that responded here, I will not let anyone see who they are.
Good.
That's for me to know. What position, okay, so the next one is staff. So any questions about the students? Things you would like to know differently or?
Well, I'd like to see the neutral one gone because neutral is like, I don't want to answer, you know, or do. It's not a direct question or an answer, I should say.
We'll keep that in mind. We can do that. You ready for the staff? Okay, uh, what position do you work in? Oh, go ahead.
I just said ready.
Okay. Uh, what position do you work on? You can see that we opened this up to everyone because, uh, as we are moving forward, we need every staff member in our district to be on the same team because it's going to take all of us to move forward in a positive direction. And so I feel we've been working really positive in that and really putting our ears to the ground and listening. So you can see that this 66% with teachers, but, but paraprofessionals, custodians, secretary of maintenance and 239 responses. So that's a really solid response from our staff. Not that I didn't send it out probably about 20 times asking for them to please respond. So do you have proper equipment available to you while you're working from home? Agree, strongly agree. But we do have a group in here of individuals that feel like they don't have this, the equipment. And I did have a conversation with someone last week. And one of the conversations, um, was that, um, well, two things. Uh, we were, we had a, a meeting last Thursday where the staff came and spoke to me and I had about 85 people on the call and they worked in small groups. And one of the person said at the end of the meeting, Dr. Crouppie, is there a chance that we could all get laptops? And I said, I have about this much money to give you laptops. And, um, they said a grant. I said, I'll write whatever grant you bring to me. And afterwards I talked to somebody else and they said, but could we, um, have access to purchasing Chromebooks at the same rate that you guys did? And I said, that we could probably do. And so we are going to look into, uh, the cost of, um, of the Chromebooks, the Chromebooks with the insurance and the laptops that we purchase as well, and reach out and see if our staff are interested in purchasing those. So that they can have access to those if they wanted to have one of those as home as, at home as well. Because I guess one of the concerns is, is if kids have Chromebooks, teachers don't always know how to ask. So that seemed to be some of the concerns there. Any questions?
It makes a lot of sense to offer them a Chromebook. Um, so I like that idea.
And then were you able to contact admin to get what you need? I have, uh, the, um, disagree and strongly disagree. This is a small part. I don't know what that is about yet. Um, I haven't been able to dig into this, but a majority of the people have. Of course, we want this again to be 100% that they're able to address admin with what they need. And so I still need to try to address to figure out what that's about. I'm sure that people will eventually tell, it eventually always gets to me. It was not in the staff responses. Any questions? Were you able to complete work at home that was requested or assigned of you? Again, you know, a majority of the people, but we do have a, a slice in here of individuals that weren't. And, um, you know, a lot of comments about connectivity going down where there's multiple people in there. A lot of comments about the, um, doing this work at home is very cumbersome and takes a lot of time. And so, you know, I think there's a lot of conversations that need to be had around that about how you can team up with somebody else and what that looks like for the coming fall. Questions? My students participated in my classes. I, um, when I did my meeting with about 85 staff members, somebody came up and came out of the room and said, I couldn't take it. It was so frustrating. And so I think one of the biggest frustrations that I heard from teachers is the lack of participation. And, um, and when I read some of the notes in the survey, they said that, you know, the school district should hold parents and kids responsible for attending. And of course, you know, there's things we can control and things we can't control. And we can tell people they have to attend all they want, but we can't make people attend in their homes as much as we can't make people come to school. And so, um, I think our, one of our teachers' biggest frustrations were that they prepared and did all these things and then maybe five or 10 kids would show up on a Zoom. So the, the age-old question of how do we increase participation was a major frustration to our teachers and I certainly can understand that.
And I don't think the kids, uh, it was the high school level. They don't like it when there's only a couple of them either there too. It's, it's, they'll stop going because, you know, some of the more optional ones, like they had grade level meetings, you know? My daughter's like, I was the only one on there one week. And I was, she's like, I'm not calling in there again. I don't want to be the only person on that call. And I was like, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. It was, you know, an actual call, um, for her grade, but it was, you know, they're, they're so socially aware, right? They don't, they don't want to draw attention to themselves. So it's actually better when there's more on, I think.
And so, so the, the question that we talked about at one point is, as you know, we authorize MBCA, which is the cyber school, and they have 95%. So there's a, a participation. There's a difference between signing up for a, a cyber school because you want to be there and being made to be online because you have to be there. Want versus have. And I think, you know, that's what we're, we're saddled with right now is individuals that come to school because they want to be in school with teachers and participate and they love their teachers and they love to be in the building and interact versus individuals that want to be cyber for a purpose. And individuals that are here are here because they want to be in Hazel Park schools. They didn't...
I would say as a parent, I would have no idea whether my child missed a meeting or not because I have no idea when the teachers are meeting because it's all across. There was, it felt like they were at all different times and for different things. I wouldn't know if they missed a class, even though I know they're dialing into some. I don't know if they, I would know they would miss one. So, you know, I don't know if there's any way, if we were to go, you know, with the Moving Forward Committee, if you want to consider that, um, how to at least measure participation or set expectations so the parents should know when they should be on. So if they do have a morning Zoom call, it could help make sure they're up if that's expected. Uh, I know it's not up to the parents, but I'm just saying that we don't, at a high school level, I don't have any insight as to when they're supposed to be on.
So, uh, that's, uh, so you didn't get emailed out of their Google Classroom or any communication from teachers or the school about the schedule?
No, we got some general stuff, but nothing specific.
Junior high did. We got emailed about the schedule Monday, Wednesday, Friday, these classes at these times. So that was out there in the very beginning.
So for the high school, they had the same kind of thing. And so that's interest, that's a, uh, that's a good learning piece too about how do we develop about our communication system if we have to do this again? Oh, thank you. Other, other thoughts there? Um, staff survey, I have reliable access to a computer throughout my entire workday. Majority, yes, but there are individuals that, um, are sharing their computers with their kids. And so this is the big issue that we have to think about too is that our staff are home with their own children. And, um, sometimes they have, or their spouse, or their grown children. We had one person who had two grown children that were living with them and had really important jobs. And there were internet issues in their own home. And they, they, she felt one of the teachers that their job was more important because they were supporting major hospitals and emergency centers.
Well, I kind of would agree with that because myself, because my high school kid has a Chromebook and I have a laptop, I don't want to go to the district and say, give me a Chromebook because I have a laptop because it's taking from somebody who doesn't have anything at all. So I guess it's a, you know, catch 27 there.
Yep, yep. There was a lot of, uh, that, those kind of conversations. It's, it really brought to light inequities. It brought to light, you know, different things that you had to look at. So other questions about this? And then how often, this was more for a paraprofessional. How often are you being asked to join a teacher with a Zoom session? Or, um, you know, it could be also for a psych or a social worker? Because, you know, we asked our paraprofessionals to join their teachers. So we could look to see, you know, are we utilizing our paraprofessionals in the best manner? This is really important for us. Our MTSS teachers joined teachers and helped co-teach and break kids into rooms. Any questions? I have the proper safety equipment to do my job. Safety equipment entering into, um, this is going to be a major conversation moving forward. Given the fact that, um, we have children with significant disabilities. We have SXI students, we have EI students, ASD students. We have kindergarten students that spit. So, uh, safety equipment is going to be a significant conversation moving forward.
Can you go back to the last one real quick?
Yep.
I'm sorry, what did you say? So were there multiple colors based on who responded to this? It's like a C.
These multiple colors were daily, weekly, bi-weekly, never, weekly.
So there's two weekdays, two never's. So is that, that's what I was trying to figure out.
I'm not sure why it ended up that way.
Okay.
But I probably will, um, probably can pull it out differently.
Okay. I, I just didn't know if it was, yeah, I didn't know if that was.
So this is a question from a board member. Uh, and this is that, should we, could, could it be done in two days? And the other two days is for classwork? And it gives the time for teachers, uh, the students to email the teachers their problems and either to have one day, one-on-one, or email back from the others with a solution? So this was, um, you know, just a question that was put out there about is, uh, could this be done in a different way? And this is something we can take to the Moving Forward Committee. So it's kind of a mixed solution. So the kids would only have two days of class and the other, so two days of class, two days for classwork. And the teachers would work on the other days. So they would, instead of three days of teachers' work, the teachers would only work two days for classwork. And the other times is, you know, communicating with their teachers. Any questions there? I feel supported by the administrators to do my jobs. There's a neutral and then there's a group that does not. Questions?
No, I like the response on this though.
Well, again, you don't, we want to say, what is this and what can I do to change this? Right?
Yeah, but that might be a group of people you'll never make happy, which is a shame. But to have 37 and 45, and if you put those together, that's a strong number.
And this is across the whole entire district. So this isn't just HPEA, this is Advantage, this is GSRP, this is our entire district.
Yeah, I would agree with Sue that these are, these are strong results. That's good to see.
Do you feel overwhelmed with the class, with the everyday class time that is requested? So about, right, 34%? You know? Disagree? 18%? Oh, and this number's off here. So it's probably about the 8% too. About 26% strongly agree. And then 38% are like, hmm, whatever, right? So, you know, you've got, I would say 50/50 agree and disagree. So some people are taking it in stride and some are feeling super overwhelmed. I mean, I talked to a teacher last week that was preparing stuff for AP and they were, they started at six in the morning and, and finished like at midnight that day. It was, it was a tough day. Though some people are putting in some long hours. It's a lot of work. I, I can tell you that our teachers have done an amazing job turning this around. This is tough. This has been tough work. Has there been a variety of professional development topics? Um, you know, we have done professional development, um, uh, every Thursday morning for the teachers. And that's what, we had Tuesdays and Thursdays free. Tuesday and Thursday morning, we're supposed to be for professional development or other meetings. And the afternoons are supposed to be left open for them to plan with each other. And how many hours are you spending planning or preparing for remote instruction? Yes, it's really split as well.
Yeah, that is.
I'm not sure why this came up this way again.
I was wondering if it was because it's from two different groups or something that it somehow summarized on different.
Maybe it's why it came out that way again. Any questions about the surveys? Just general comments or as a group board, you want to talk about it?
You know, I agree with Sue on that neutral question. I think some of it, either you know it or you don't know it. And it's giving them an out. So I agree with taking that out of there or wording it a little different. Questions were good.
Was that helpful for you to get a good feel what's happening with your staff?
Well, for me.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for sharing that. It was helpful.
Do you want to move on with the Moving Forward Committee?
Or have any other comments? Or if not, we can move on. All right, let's go forward to Moving Forward.
Okay. So we obviously have to plan as a district and, um, about where we're going next. And, you know, some districts are out there saying that they have in-depth plans and, uh, some may have in-depth plans. But I really believe most people are pretty much where we are, maybe a few weeks ahead of time. You know, everybody has started to develop committees, um, of stakeholders. And we have, we have over 40 stakeholders on our committee. They consist of teachers, community members. We have a health professional from Ascension. We have, um, paraprofessionals, secretaries, custodians, central office administrators. Xavier's on the committee. Boy, I just can't think of who else we have on the committee. It is a big committee. And I also sit on the same kind of committee at the ISD. I want to cook Robinson sits on the same committee at the state level. So, and we're receiving a lot of good information. Uh, the purpose of the committee is, you know, this is a health crisis. This isn't an educational crisis. This is a health crisis. And that health crisis is going to guide us on what we need to do health-wise to protect our kids within the school. And because of the health crisis, we have to be flexible about how we're educating our students. And that's really the, the words and the conversation that we've been using at the ISD level. And we need the state. And, um, we said that very loudly today to our legislators. We met with all the legislators in Oakland County today that we need guidance from the state that is signed off from by medical professionals to guide us to make sure we are making a safe Michigan for our students to return to. Clear, research-based guidelines. And that's what we're working for in our committee as well. So we had our second meeting last week. The first meeting that we had, the first week is we just got to know each other. And everybody had a list of questions that they were all thinking about, all concerned about, from community members to parents, to teachers, to parents, to administrators, just really talking through all the questions that we had. Then the second week, we started to develop a purpose and some guiding principles and goals. And so our purpose is really, we are going to develop this return to school plan with all the stakeholders' input. And we're going to have both instructional and, and the wellness needs of our Hazel Park Schools community in mind when we do that. So this is the, the group that's going to be developing this, this, um, plan. And then when we work together, our guiding principles is that we're going to provide recommendations with actionable steps throughout this whole planning process. That, um, these are just recommendations and, and, um, and they have to be actionable. And that we also need to remember that we're going to show grace, flexibility and open-mindedness and understanding because this health crisis and the educational, educational impact continues to involve, like evolve. Like I said, last Wednesday, we didn't know we were, we could have 100 people together. And, and the next week, we could have something totally different. We could be back to 10. So we have to continue to realize that while we all want answers, we don't have them yet. And that finally, that we want to continue to reach out to our students and our stakeholders and community members to understand their needs. While we're going to have a state recommended plan, you know, uh, the state is not Hazel Park. And so what might work for others such as a hybrid model is not going to work for Hazel Park because many of our parents need to work. And so if I send my kids home for two days and have them in school for two days, well, then our parents can't go to work for two days. So we have to make some determination about what we're going to do for those two days when our kids aren't in a classroom, if that's what our community comes up with. And we need childcare. And today, when we met with legislators, that's what I said. You know, places like Hazel Park, places like Southfield need better childcare opportunities for our children that are related with schools. And so these are the things that we need to think about in the Moving Forward Committee. So these were our guiding principles. Any questions about the way the committee wants to function together? Sue, you're on the committee. Kristy, you're on the committee. Any comments about this? I think it was done very collaboratively.
No, I think we have a great group of people, teachers. I think it was a very diverse group that we have.
Yeah, I agree.
Then we develop, uh, goals. And, um, the goals are, here are the ways that we're thinking about having a plan for. Um, so we'll, we'll break off into two committees within the committee. One will focus on instructional scenarios that is fully opening in the fall and what that looks like, what we're going to need to do to catch kids up from being gone, what we need to do to, um, socially, emotionally support them. And then a plan to be totally virtual and then a plan for hybrid, which I just talked about, which means that kids are there for part of the time and then they're not inside the classroom for part of the time. And then a plan if we need to shut down. And so lots of people are predicting like in November, December, there could be a possible outbreak. And so what would happen? Or what would happen if, um, we, somebody came into Ford School and got everyone sick and we needed to close the alternative school? What would we do? And then E, we wrote other possible needs. So this could be, for example, let's say that 30% of our parents didn't want to come back at all. What are we going to do to provide an opportunity for those parents that don't want to come back at all? Or are we going to? Are we going to develop a K-12 virtual school like some of the other school districts have? You know, in other places so that we meet temporarily for those parents that are worried to come back or the medically fragile children that can't come back due to life-threatening situations? How are we going to educate those students? That's the instructional committee. The next one... The next one, the next goal is to develop a communication plan for the HP community to understand all the protocols, expectations, and safety plans in place. And this one is the committee that will be talking about the buildings. How are we going to take temperatures? How do we space kids? How do we space them in the halls? What happens if a parent doesn't pick them up? How do we do lunches? How do we do buses? The first committee, our administrators of Stephanie, Carla, Tamara will be on that committee. And then the committee gets, the committee members get to pick which one they're on. And then they'll break those into smaller groups. And people will decide and maybe a community member, maybe a principal will be leading those smaller groups. And then the second one, Jason, myself, and Matt will be first leading that committee. And then we'll break into smaller groups. And there could be, you know, somebody else might be leading that committee, like Marsh is on that committee. Maybe Martian Matt will lead the food. Cheryl Dersky, who is the supervisor, she might be leading transportation with another community member. And then Jason might be leading, you know, safety materials such as hand sanitizer. So for example, we've already bought three hundred, well, we haven't bought, we have for free three hundred hand sanitizer machines to go in every single classroom. He's already stockpiling hand sanitizer every time we can get our hands on it. What are the other things that we need to get to make sure that we have safe and clean schools for our students? So that's what number two is. At our next meeting, we will come up with some norms that we'll talk about, that we all believe such as that we'll reopen school, that that we have to take temperatures and things like that. And those norms will be changed. The other thing is, is that we have documents listed here that we're following. So there is a document called The New School Planning Guide. This one is the one that the ISD and the State Glenn Committee is following. The Glenn is the committee that did all of the COL documents. And so they're utilizing this planning guide to think through and check off things. And if you look through here, it talks to you about what you need to think about, such as how many students are returning? How many adults are over the age of sixty-five that we might need to be concerned about? What additional spaces do you have in your building to think about, like just the gym or the lunchroom? And as well as we have, this is what Governor Whitmer is using. They're using the return to school roadmap, the Opportunity Labs. And so we also have been used this familiar to our group in our first meeting. And then the governor's return plan is also in this document that we've looked at to know what levels the doc, the governor's looking at. We meet every Thursday, one to three o'clock by Zoom. And I would assume that once we get our instructional group and building group up and going, that those smaller groups might meet on a more regular basis too, so that we have our plan in place. I don't think that we'll have our plan done until July. But I believe we will start communicating by letter from me, from the larger group, talking to the community about what we're planning. And we may put some stuff up on the website so people can kind of follow it and know that we're working, we're thinking. We're, you know, we believe the governor will put a document out with some guidance that, and expectations from the state board and from her committees. So that's what we're doing. Now can I answer any questions?
No, I mean, this makes sense. It's, it's got, I mean, it covers the things that I have questions on. And it sounds like it's, you know, being developed and, and will evolve as we get closer.
Is there something everybody would like to see that they have, don't see us laying out here right now? I, we have, we have lots of people that are on this phone call right now that are on this committee.
Your hand sanitizers, are they in the classroom or where the students get access to that? We were in trouble with previously?
So we have, they, they will be placed at the entrance of every door of the classroom. So they're in full view of the teacher. So the plan is that when you walk into the classroom, my, sorry, shouldn't say. My guess is the plan would be something like you walk into the classroom, you take one thing, you wipe it, you sit down. When you leave the classroom, you click it, you wipe it, you sit down. Um, it's not going to be in a bathroom where you can't see it. And, you know, the teacher's going to have to have their eyes on it. But hand sanitizer has found to be one of the better things, right, that you're utilizing? Unfortunately. And it's, and it is going to be sixty to seventy percent alcohol. But it's going to be in a hand sanitizer machine. And we've already, you know, we've already dug in and gotten ourselves in a position ahead of it. So that, just like we did those three sixty Clorox sprays. So that, you know, we're out and ahead of everyone. Yes, there is always a concern that they're going to eat it. Other questions?
Social distancing will come under the instructional committee?
No, social distancing will come under the safety protocols.
And is that under the building group?
Yes.
Safety protocols.
Yep.
Have we figured this into our budget yet or what it's going to cost us?
No.
I don't think we're really far enough along to even start putting numbers in.
No, and, and you know, this is interestingly enough, it doesn't go here, but maybe it does go here. This is the, this morning when we were on with the legislators, where with the Republicans and Democrats all at the same time. You know, they said their first priority is to not take any dollars away from the educational fund this year or next year. And the Republicans and Democrats both said that they want to leave our budget untouched here in Michigan, and that is their goal. And that they know that we're going to need additional funds to cover the PPE. And, you know, from the Waterford superintendent to myself, having that conversation of, you know, you know, here in Hazel Park. You know, we need more than just that. We need to keep our teachers in place. We're going to need money for PPE. We're going to need to be, we don't have to worry about transportation. Waterford has to worry about transportation, but we have to worry about childcare. So each district is going to have a different situation than another. And we're going to need some local control, how to spend the dollars. But we're all going to need dollars to deal with, with the changes that are going to need to come in place for safety. So we hope that they uphold as education is their number one plan as we're developing these goals. Any other questions? Okay. Any conversations you want to have as a board?
Are we getting a copy of these books so we can read them ourselves or?
I absolutely will send you a link to these. Would you like them run off instead for you?
Hey, no, Chuck, go green. Email it.
I can email, I can email this. I will email, I will email this entire PowerPoint to you, Chuck. Everybody, when I'm done. So latchkey. So we, our plan is to open latchkey in the next two weeks after school gets out. And we will see if we are able to pull this off. What happened is, is that I was in a meeting two weeks ago with the Rochester superintendent where he said he has opened his childcare. And I listened very carefully to what Dr. Shaner had to say. And knowing how important it is that we get childcare off the ground for our community and our parents. I called him up the next day and talked to him in depth about what he did. Now, some of the things that he's done, we cannot do in our community. Some of the financial pieces that he's put in place. But I had Stephanie, sorry, Dr. Dolmetsch. Dr. Dolmetsch called his business manager and the head of their childcare and began talking and thinking this through with Mrs. Bratton and other individuals in the latchkey program. And then it's also worked with Jason. So, and, so we have, are working to try to figure this out. We also have sent out a staff, survey to staff and a survey to parents. And right now we have twenty-four parents that are interested in latchkey over the summer. So what we have just talked about is increasing the number of staff members that we would normally use and decreasing the number of students in the classroom. We also believe this will give us a good indication of some of the social distancing issues and things we need to think about in our classrooms when we start in the fall. The, the plan is to have a one to eight ratio in the classroom as well as to have three to four staff on site. We haven't quite landed on what our plan to do is because we also wrote for a childcare grant, childcare relief grant. And we've been, and we are receiving that on a monthly basis. When you write for this childcare relief grant, there's some changes that we have to do in our latchkey. We have to, we can't charge the same amount for our, to our parents as we normally would, we have to do a ten percent reduction to our parents. So with that in mind, we believe that if we do three staff members versus four staff members, right? We could do, we could be losing about six thousand dollars out of our latchkey fund. If we run this program this summer. So our plan is, if we use four, what would happen is we'd have three staff members. A fourth to be around in case there was a child that was sick or a child needed to be separated. And then we also have a lead latchkey person that oversees it. And then we would have twenty-four kids in eight tour room. If we had more students that wanted to come, then we would add another staff member. The cost is, last year was a hundred dollars a week. And so we believe we would have to charge, I believe, ninety dollars a week. Plus, we would have to, we, we charged them on activity fee. So we're still looking into that. Oops, let me go this other direction. So that, that is our plan. I believe that we're thinking about doing it at Webb Elementary School or Hoover. If it's at Webb, that's because that's where the lunch program is. If we do it at Hoover, it's because the lunch program is at, at the high school, so we can walk it across the street. So that, that is our plan. We do have money in the latchkey program. That is money that, and we have a fair balance. But we believe that this is an important benefit to our families in Hazel Park. And that it's important to get this off the ground and going, to get our parents back to work and support them in this community.
Well, how much does it cost in the district for the staff?
Right here is how much it's going to cost you for the district for the staff.
That's the twenty-nine thousand?
No, it's going to cost us about six thousand dollars we're going to lose to run it.
The full staff is there under expenses though, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. It's going to cost us about six thousand dollars.
So you're saying that the latchkey has a fund, has a balance?
We have about a thirty thousand dollar balance.
Yeah. Out of that, right? It's not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of latchkey fund. We have some, we have some money in there and this takes away from that.
Yep. Right. It's the balance that our latchkey families have built up over time.
And what ages is latchkey?
I think we can, we only go to fifth grade. Is that correct? Andrea, you're on the phone. Actually Laura's on the phone. Laura Muhammad's on the phone, I think.
Yeah, it goes for our kids going into kindergarten, five until fifth grade.
Thank you.
I, you know, we're really excited. I think to get started and to give our family some relief that they also desperately need over the summer to get back to work.
And with her closing the schools for the remainder of the year, can we have them in our schools?
Oh yeah, childcare is already going other places. And she just opened summer daycare. She opened summer daycare and summer camps today. But we could have already done this. We could have opened childcare, but we didn't have a childcare facility. And, and I, I, I do, you know, in my heart of hearts, if I could figure out a way or get some financial backing, believe that we should expand some childcare. Because that is the other downside in the fall for our families. If our families, if our teachers, and this was another thing that I talked about with another person. If our teachers are in another school district and their children are going hybrid, how do they come and teach for us for five days? That becomes an issue in the fall.
I think that we need to figure out that going forward plan before we think about childcare.
Well, that's, that's how you figure that solution out.
I think they go kind of hand in hand, right?
Yes. That's your solution right there, Sue, is childcare for your staff.
Oh, I get it, but I think that setting childcare up first is kind of, like Kristi just said, they go hand in hand. We have to figure out both plans at the same time.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about. So you, there's, there's, there's another issue that looms upon us in the fall. And that goes back to our leaning forward plan. That whatever we come up with, if our, if our teachers are back here five days a week in a hybrid situation and, and we come up something for our families for five days, we also are going to have to have something for our teachers for five days. With little kids.
What, what are we doing about the lunch program for the summer? Are we running it like it's being run now, like a pickup? Or?
Yes. We are running the same program except in two locations. It's running at Webb and it's running at the high school all the way through. So to the end of June, we're running all three locations as we have. And it's really slowing down, right? As soon as people got their EBT cards, that, that, that program has slowed down some. But we're running it at all three locations. At the end of June, we'll, we'll move it down to two locations and it will be at Webb and at United Oaks.
And then what's? What's happening with summer school then? Obviously, are we offering something online for those kids for, you know, who are already struggling? And then everything kind of fell apart with school this year or what, what are we doing?
Great, great, great question. So we are offering a variety of options for summer school. So for the high school, we will be virtually online with students that need to. I believe with a cost of twenty dollars per class. So anybody that has credit recovery nine through twelve will be able to do virtual online. So that's nine through twelve. So we have several options for K through K through, I would like to just do this for a moment if I can. I have to. Let's see if I can talk through them all. So K through eight, we're going to have a variety of options. So we have been able to do something called IXL, or sorry, iReady. So K through eight, every student K through eight will have access to something called iReady. And they'll be keeping their computers if they have a student one, as long as we know that they are registering and coming back. iReady gives you both math and reading access all summer long to learning modules. And once you go in and you start working on those learning modules, it will, will move up and down based upon your ability. So it's, it gives you access, you know, to work all summer long, all the way up to August. And then two hundred students K through eight have been referred to a pilot program for iReady that'll help us assess whether or not this program is working for our students. This program is used by Rochester. It's used by Novi. And it's used by a lot of other school districts across the state. We're getting it for free all summer long and, and a diagnostic program. So for those with the money that we get from the state to pay for standard school teachers, we are having them check on these two hundred students. Those students, those parents received emails over the weekend. And their students will be assessed in the next two weeks by iReady. And then their students, the parents have to agree to forty-five minutes of reading and forty-five minutes at least of math a week. Hopefully more. And then at the end of the summer, they'll be assessed and we'll come back and present to you if we believe iReady is working to determine if we want to recommend to purchase iReady. In case we continue to go on and offline again, it will be something that the kids can work on to continue with their math and reading skills. Rochester used it as one of their pieces that they used with their kids K through eight. We additionally received ten thousand dollars from the Ballmer Group. So each of our students, K through five, will receive a book packet with several books that they will be able to, their parents will be able to come and pick up after school gets out. We didn't get them in time. And so there'll be books that are at their, their And so there'll be books that are at their, their reading level. We also will receive, is Stephanie online?
Yes, I am.
I'm here.
Oh, Stephanie, do you want to finish please so I don't mess it up? I didn't know you were there.
That's okay. I think you had it covered. So I, the very last option is a program called Kids Read Now. And essentially Kids Read Now is a subscription-based program. It also has a very nice parent component along with it. And students in grades one through three, all of our students in grades one through three whose parents agree to wanting the subscription again to be involved in that process, will have access to getting at least six books delivered to their home. Really nice component is parent engagement component. There are comprehension questions and all kinds of information about how to engage with their children. And the way that that is built is that when students read the book, parents are supposed to engage in this discussion. And then they email the company or they respond in the smartphone app and that triggers the sending of another book. So it's a really beautiful book program. The books are all targeted at the children's actual reading level. When we send information to the company, we actually send the level that the child's at. So it's very targeted for the child. So we think between all of these wonderful opportunities, we've given our children beautiful opportunities to learn in both math and reading and really hooked in that parent engagement piece.
Dr. Dolmetsch has been working very, very hard and we are very grateful from the $10,000 grant from Ballmer Group that we wrote for. That's just one part of the $102,000 we recently received from Ballmer Group that, that has been given to the school district and eternally grateful. Plus a $14,000 grant from the state of Michigan that we wrote for, for summer materials for the K through two students. So extremely lucky to be able to purchase these materials to continue to extend our learning for kids. So Christie, thank you for asking that. Any questions, board? We've left you speechless.
Lots of good information.
Yes. More good information for you? Wednesday night is the alternative graduation. It is online and it's virtual. Their guest speaker is Dr. Krupi, who has been told she can only speak for five minutes. Though she had a 20-minute speech, she's going to be cutting it down quickly. June 4th at nine o'clock is the Hazel Park High School Car Parade. Right now, we have 70 cars registered for the car parade. They will be lining up in front of the high school. Behind the high school will be 1,400 boxes of fruits and vegetables that will be handed out. Some will be delivered to local senior centers beforehand. We have lots of senior centers. And, and so if you know other seniors that need to have it delivered, please let us know as well. Our boxes of food last week went out very quickly. So we're, we're loving to take care of our Hazel Park community and those around us. At 6:15 on, on June 4th is Jardon Car Parade. You show up to Jardon and Megan will place you six feet apart with masks on, we ask. And you can be a part of the very carefully planned celebration for our Jardon students. On June 10th at 10 a.m. will be the Armed Forces graduation at the Veterans Memorial. And we confirmed with all our graduates today, even though it's opened up, that a majority of them would like to do it at the War Memorial. And we are looking for a couple veterans. We're looking for Air Force and I have a couple people that are looking for Marine and Navy to join us if they're interested. On June 9th at 12 p.m., we have a fifth grade clap out at United Oaks. So if you'd like to join us then. And on June 9th at 3 p.m., a web drive-by for fifth grade if you'd like to join us then. On 10, June 10th at 10 a.m., we'll have a parade to deliver the class awards for the junior high. Sorry, I didn't put that on. You can meet at 9:30 at the junior high to join the parade. At June 10th at 10:30 is the Hoover Fifth Grade Clap Out if you'd like to join them then. And at June 11th, at 9:15 is the drive-out of the, the junior high. We are going to have some super, super exciting things going on the next two weeks in Hazel Park. Questions?
Yes. So for the alternative graduation, we would just join on and the Zoom graduation?
Yes.
And then for the Jardon Car Parade, what are we doing?
We're just standing as the cars drive by.
In front of Jardon on Woodward Heights?
Um, I think they're going to go probably through the parking lot.
So we'll be in the parking lot?
Yep. And you're going to whoop, whoop.
And that's in front of the school? That's not the web, that is the Jardon?
That's the Jardon side, yes.
Okay. And then Saturday, this Saturday is the Armed Forces?
Armed Forces graduation. We have five graduates that are going into the Armed Forces this month.
At what time are we meeting there?
Uh, let me get back to you. Probably 9:45.
Okay.
It'll be very quick. I will give a speech, Ken will give a speech. And we will salute them and give them their, we'll probably have them laid on a table, I think. I think it was Laura, you talked to me about that. I think we'll have things laid out on a table. For them.
So that one, we're just going to be, will be in person but going to spread out for the Armed Forces one?
Spread you out, but we're going to allow more people to come now that the, has, it has, the numbers have grown. So I'm going to get there probably about nine o'clock and set up and social distance some Xs and things on the, maybe some chalk or what have you. You'll have to ask Ed what I can put down on the ground. Anything else?
Um, I'm just looking. I think we've got placeholders for just about everything. I did see, did you see that Dr. Dolmetsch put it in the chat? That we just heard from Invest?
I have not heard from Invest and I can't see the chat when I'm up here.
Okay. Well, it says that Invest emailed that they're going to have a car drive-up graduation on June 19th. So I guess stay tuned for that. I knew you were working on that.
We'll do that as well.
Okay. All right. Does the board have any other questions at all these events? I know it's quite a few and it's not that we have to go to everyone, but it's nice knowing they are in case you want to join, so.
All right.
I think I could probably skip this data till next time, given the time and have a couple other conversations. Um, speaking of Invest, I'd like to have a brief conversation about Longfellow. There's been some discussion from Invest to utilize Longfellow next year for a couple reasons. And they're very interested and I said we would come back in a week on Wednesday and have a further conversation with them. They have a couple, they have a school idea and then they also have a business. They are, they now are in the food industry and they have 16 schools that they're doing food with. And they would like to use the kitchen at Longfellow to use that as one of their staging areas as well. And we had a discussion this morning at Cabinet and I wanted to put that in front of you in light of at this point, we're not using Longfellow. But I wanted to just let you talk through that a little bit to see your thoughts about us going forward in that conversation. You know, given we're not sure where the fall is and, and, and just what your thoughts are about that.
So they just want to use the kitchen? They want to use it? I guess I'm not 100% clear.
So they want to develop a, a school, another school. And I, I, I'm not comfortable talking about the whole situation, but they want to utilize the whole school. They'd like to rent the whole school from us.
I mean, if it's, you know, they're going to treat it as well as they're treating the other school, I don't really see a problem with it. Not being used.
I'm with Christie on that one. If we need extra room for spacing kids, we got the other side of Webster that we're not using. Correct?
Yeah, I'm not, you know, the problem, yeah, I'm not sure how much room we will or won't need yet for spacing and, and for students.
I mean, I think it's a discussion to go ahead. I mean, it's extra money that we'd have coming in that instead of having the building empty.
But I think the, I know there's been a couple ideas on how, how we could use Longfellow. But yeah, if those aren't, if we, if we don't anticipate using it, I can see where it may make sense to let Invest use it. So do we, you know, do, do we know based on like the moving forward discussions? I mean, is Longfellow a possibility of being used if we need it?
Well, we, we haven't had those discussions yet. We also would have to think about where would we put childcare if we potentially had to develop childcare. And, and we've not done numbers on if we had to reduce class sizes to 10. But yet we don't know if we would end up having to use Longfellow or not.
How soon do they want to know, Dr. Krupi?
Pretty quick. I think they want to get rolling too, right? We're in a, we're going to catch 22.
There is a lot of space at Webster. What about, will, will they pay rent?
We haven't negotiated terms yet, but I would assume yes.
Would it be, does this cost the same as previous or are you going to upgrade it to a little bit more of a C?
Well, the last time we started negotiating, it was less of a, of a profit for us, but it was still a profit for us. So last year, remember, we started negotiating. It's, it's much like the schools we were starting to negotiate with last year. That didn't come to fruition.
Right. I do remember that we had talked about this, talked about something a year ago. So I guess from the board, I mean.
Andrea said, I'm not sure how much space we will have at Webster should we need to follow in license requirements for COVID. Some, but not a lot will be available.
Uh, with the plan that you're placing with going back, if you give the parents the option of the ones that don't want their kids there, the ones that are okay with the online learning, maybe doing Zoom in the classroom. I don't know. I, I think that we should look at utilizing Longfellow as an income. So I think it would be better used as a school for them.
I think that, um, this seems like it would be more long-term. I hope that the COVID thing is going to be really temporary. So I'd hate to pass up, you know, a deal or, or something that benefit our district for, you know, what we're thinking is going to happen over the course of one school year, holding us back.
Any other comments?
I think it, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, the general, generally people would like to see the building used. So if, um, so it sounds like we would want to continue having a discussion about that.
I will progress on that discussion and bring it to the Buildings and Grounds and Finance as we progress. Thank you for your guidance. Laura, do you want to talk a little bit about this and I'll move it or would you like me to?
I can talk a little bit about it. So I forwarded the board a series of emails today that we received regarding the enhancement village. So I think you may remember that Rosie and Dr. Krupi and I went to a meeting, it was earlier this year with, with a group of people that are interested in passing in Oakland County or an Oakland ISD village that would benefit all the school districts within the ISD. So this is the PowerPoint that was in one of the attachments that I sent. Which, I'm sorry, my power was just going to go out. The, so you, you can take, take a look through this, but this is basically the back on it. The, um, this kind of explains how, you know, how our schools funded. An enhancement, you know, village is very specific and it, and it does not go to the, while it's all, it's supposed to be open ISD, none of the money goes to ISD. It goes all to the local districts. I think that's on the, maybe the next slide. Yeah, here's where we're kind of clarified that, you know, this, this is given to 100% to local school districts, which is important to know. This talks, you know, so it's got some, some impact to the average homeowner. So this is basically saying if it passed, you know, 100,000 home, $100,000 home would pay about $50 a year in taxes. And this is county-wide. This talks a little bit about what other counties have already approved this. So, you know, one of the, one of the things they talked about in the meeting that we went to was that other people are doing this and this is giving them a let it go. This, you know, March, March, McComb just passed this in March, McComb County. So all of their districts in McComb County and Wayne and Monroevies are all getting a boost per pupil. And, and these are long-term things. So you can see that McCombs just passed for 10 years. So in a way that, you know, with, if Oakland County pursues this as well, it's really trying to keep us, to give us a benefit as well. So, and then I think the next slide might talk about all the other places in Michigan that's been doing this. So it's kind of been slow to progress, but it is going on. And at this point, they're asking us to pass a resolution prior to July 10th. So for us, that would be at our June meeting in a few weeks. So I sent all the information. There's some worksheet that talks specifically about what, what cities will benefit and how it all works. But please take time to look through it. And I guess at this point, if you have any, any questions, we can talk about it. Because if we're going to support this resolution, we need to have it on our agenda. Maybe we'll have it on our agenda regardless, I guess.
Was this the one that we had to have the neighboring districts support with us?
Right. Yeah, that's a good point. So the, the vote would go on, has to go, would go through the whole county. But not every district actually has to pass it for it to go forward. So the, the pass approval rate is based on the number of students. So for example, if Hazel Park voted it down and a couple other small districts voted it down, but large districts like Troy, Tanya, Southfield, if they voted yes, this whole village could still carry even if some districts vote no. So the, if you get majority of the population, student population to approve it, then this, this goes forward. I don't know if that helped answer your question.
So if we voted yes and Troy and Rochester voted no, no, and Waterford voted no, and West Bloomfield voted no, we're probably, it's probably a no. But, you know, we might be a little piece that helps somebody come over the edge. And it's being run by West Bloomfield. So there, there is a big movement for a yes and their feeling is there's no time like right now when education is, is, could be set for a loss that, to go for that. And it is about a $400 per pupil, which, you know, the original suggestion was a $400 to $700 a year cut. Now, again, as I have said and I will continue to say, we just don't know where it's going to be. You know, is there going to be a cut? Is, are they going to rescue education? Is it 400? Is it 700? Is it 2,000? Is it 1,000? You know, this is a ping pong game that really is an election year and that's what this is all about. They're going to, you know, they're going to drag it out as long as they can on all of us. So, you know, that's why people feel that to get it on right now, here and now, might be the chance for us to do this. And if it wasn't a year when we were going through this situation, this $427 makes a difference for, let's say Detroit that just started offering their teachers starting salary of 51,000. Just as we finally got to 37 and got really excited that we're in the middle of the pack, right? Our starting salaries are in the middle. We get whacked with Detroit starting their teachers at 51. How do you compete with that? You know?
Question. The, the one that you sent to us stating that the Brandon School District is not happy with the, due to the fact that they got a 35% increase in their tax revenue. Do we know how much of a tax revenue, tax increase in our city is going to be?
I'm sorry, was the question how much the tax, taxes would increase for us?
Correct. Because according to that branding, branding school district, they got an increase of about 35% in their tax increases.
Right. So at this point, it'd be one mill, which would be about $50 for a $100,000 house is what the estimate is. Now, they had something else that increased theirs by 37%. So they were basically saying, yeah, the Brandon, the Brandon School District has said they're not going to support this. I have not heard any responses from any other school districts, but I, they wanted, I wanted to make sure, pass around what I had received. Cause the email distribution list appears to just be, you know, this is kind of a grassroots effort, right? to just be, you know, this is kind of a grassroots effort, right? These are people that feel passionate about public schools, schools getting this village through. It's going to be done by the work of people that care about this and want to put it through. So it's not like, so they're just kind of getting organized and whatnot. So Brandon sounded like they had some things going on and that's a consideration for some districts that are trying to pass a bond or a village for something else that this would potentially conflict or take away from what they're trying to pass. I don't think that we have any perceived villages this year for us. So I don't think that it competes with anything we're trying to get through, thankfully, that we don't have anything on our ballot, but for them, it was a concern.
I think that Avondale, who is the district that is right over here by me, they support it. Bloomfield Hills supports it. I think there are several superintendents that do not support it. My response to the superintendents, when they sent out their notes, was that it is not my decision, it is my Board of Education's decision. And that really is the truth. You know, you need to decide in your community if you need to put that through. It is a, it is a boost for our teachers. I know there's a feeling that we need to, our state and federal government needs to fund us. On the other hand, every community, every ISD around us did it. And that is money that goes directly to us, not the ISD. And I know the ISD also is looking at ways to decrease their budget and have some savings. I know Wanda was going to make some recommendations to her board as well to make some cuts, but we'll see what happens.
And I should say that I think we made copies of the original packet we received and passed that out at one point earlier this year too. So, I mean, I think this PowerPoint helps, but, and if anything granted, you can let us know.
Is this on the November ballot?
This would go on the November ballot. I mean, that's what they're targeting. Right now, they just want us to pass a resolution to support it.
The only concern I would have is what if the city of Hazel Park says they don't want it? The other districts say they do. The residents get stuck with it. I mean, it's going to the education and I get it. At the same time, though, if the residents don't want it, they get it either way.
Yeah. I think that, that, you know, our school district benefit, you know, would strongly benefit from this. So, yeah, it is, but it is, you know, an additional tax to citizens, to residents. It is, you know, a huge, a way to generate revenue that we've never been able to do before and would certainly help us as we're looking at some base cuts.
I think it's unfortunate time to ask for it. I think it's good that we need the money and I guess we just have to talk about it and think about it, but considering people can't pay their taxes now and they're, can't pay their rent and they're losing their houses, Avondale and Bloomfield, they have whole different economics there with people's jobs and so on. So I think we just need to really think hard on this. Will this be on the agenda in two weeks?
I'm, yes. I think we should put it on the agenda. We can, but I think, yeah, you should go through things, give it some thought if, yeah.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on that? I think we got to the end of the agenda. I know we were targeting for an hour and a half. So at this point, we will move on to just do our roundtable. Let's see. Kristy, do you have any final thoughts?
I just wanted to say that I hope everyone is, you know, keeping safe and healthy. And I just wanted to end on this quote in light of some of the situations that are going on in the real world. "How wonderful it is that nobody need wait a single moment before starting to improve the world." And that is from Anne Frank.
Thank you, Kristy. Let's see. Sue?
Kristy, thank you. That was nice. I don't have anything to compare with that. Being that this was a special meeting, it was productive, but when I think of a workshop, I think of like the survey would have been one thing to spend a workshop on. So maybe in the future, more collaborative of the board on a workshop. But other than that, I think it was a, it was a good meeting and I want to thank everyone for joining us.
Thanks, Sue. I agree. And that's why we've kind of put off having one of these because it's so much harder to be, so I think it's harder to interact on a virtual with some of the data analysis. But hopefully, maybe we'll be in person next time. Ed, do you have any final comments?
Just looking forward to all the great things coming up this week. It's going to be exciting and a lot of fun. I hope people come out and they clap for our kids and wish them the best. So looking forward to the week and that's it.
I don't know if Rosie has figured out how to talk yet. Rosie? I'm going to assume no. Okay. We know you're there, Rosie. We can see your hat. Chuck?
I'd just like to say thanks to everyone for being here on this lovely evening. I already did my drive out to Oakland Schools to do the vote, so we casted our vote today for re-electing one of Oakland Schools' board members. Other than that, everyone have a great evening and see you next time.
Okay, thanks, Chuck. Dr. Krupi, you have any closing thoughts?
No, just thank you. I thank all our teachers. Next time we'll meet, school will be out officially and hopefully the next time we're all together for school, we'll be in. And thank you for the board for your helpful input and all of our thinking forward committees. And we're really proud of our students and all of our staff for all the hard work they've been doing.
Yeah, I, you know, I, we're in the home stretch and as, you know, so we thank the staff and the students are hanging in there. The end is in sight for ending this unique year and like Ed said, we've got some exciting events coming up. I'm excited that the senior car parade has 70 cars registered, so that'll be, I'll be excited. I hope, I'm hoping they decorate, but I think it'll be fun for the kids to be able to do that. The only other reminder I was going to say is that we need to read the next chapter in our book. So go ahead and read the third chapter before our next regular meeting and we can plan to share our reflections at that meeting. And that's it for me. So with that, we can move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Chuck. All right, everyone have a good night.
Good night.